Good evening, everyone. I want to call our meeting to order. And we'll have a roll call by our City Clerk Cathy Valdez.
The records should reflect that all members are present.
If you'll all rise and join us, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by Councilmember Contreras.
All right, ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires the members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only, and attendees should remain seated during the meeting. Anyone needing to stand is requested to step outside the city council chambers where the video and audio of the meeting are playing, and this is also listed on our Agenda cover sheet. Do I have students here today? Are there any students here? Yeah, a few, okay. If you want to receive credit for attending this evening's meeting, you must stay for an hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. When you're ready to leave, you can ask one of the sheriff deputies or a staff member in the back of the room to sign your paper. To speak on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the City Clerk's secretary, and the speaker slips are available on the table just outside the council chambers. And with that, we're going to go to the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
No changes, and so the next thing we have is our consent calendar. Our consent calendar recommendations will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request-to-speak card to the clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of a calendar, and we have six consent items this evening, and I don't have anybody from the public that wants to remove anything. Is everybody -- oh, Councilmember Franklin.
Madam Mayor, I don't want to withdraw Item C4 from the agenda, but I want to speak to it, and I want to thank staff for recognizing the impact that one misappropriated or stolen shopping cart has in our neighborhoods. Shopping carts that are abandoned, filled with garbage, pushed off into the weeds. It takes one of them to really bring our neighborhoods down, and this is a huge, huge issue. I really want to thank our Public Works staff because they have taken the initiative to say if there is a cart and if they've got a vehicle that they can load that cart into and take it where it goes, or bring it back to the yard and have somebody come collect it, that we don't drive by it anymore, that we pick it up, that we take measures to keep Vista clean. This is a huge step in the right direction, recognizes our commitment to a clean and beautiful Vista, so thank you. And with that, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Contreras.
I would like to pull Item C3, but also just going off of the comments, I did want to discuss C4, didn't want to pull it either, but just highlighting, as Councilwoman Franklin said, the importance it is for us to have clean streets, no shopping carts. Every single trash walk that I do on Wednesday, we know we're going to find a shopping cart. And so what we do is we use it to haul some more trash, we take it to our pickup location at Luis Duran, and Public Works has been very, just quick, fantastic at making sure that, you know, they pick up everything that me and my little trash crew collects on that day, but it's always a shopping cart, at least one. So that's great. But I did want to pull C3, and I just wanted to make a general comment on it. There are several commissions where we have commissions committees where we have multiple people sitting on two commissions, and it's not to single out anybody individually. I think, you know, everybody who is on this list to be nominated and accepted for these commissions committees, they're fabulous people, they have amazing backgrounds, and they're going to do really well for our city. However, because we have so many people applying for commissions and committees, I do just want to say for the public record, I think it's really important for the council to bring in some more people into the first rung of participating in government at that level. So I just want us to be cognizant of, you know, there's a lot of people that apply for these, and it would be nice to have different people filling these roles. But with that said, that's pretty much all I have to say about that item. I do make a motion to move forward with the recommended action in the...
A second.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay, and just because I've been around for a long time on this, sometimes it's really hard to find people qualified, especially like for our, oh geez, the Commission, the Investment Advisory Commission, it's hard to find people with the knowledge on some of these commissions to put in that position. So sometimes that's why they're in dual commissions, because it's hard to find people qualified, or maybe enough people don't qualify, don't apply for that thing, and they don't have any knowledge of it, so anyway, but that's just one of the reasons. But we can look at that policy if you want to change the policy.
Yeah, you know, I think it's a discussion that maybe we should have in the future, just because there are so many applications that come before us, and it would be good to have more people participating at that first rung of government, so, but yeah, maybe for a future council meeting, we can have that discussion. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I have a motion and a second, so everybody cast your votes, please. That motion passes unanimously. That leads us to our next item, which are actually two discussion items this evening. The first one is our Number D1, Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness. No? Yeah, we voted on the whole consent calendar. Did you have something? Okay. Yeah, that was the whole consent calendar. There were just six items, and we talked about two, and, okay. So D1, the Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness, and our Assistant City Manager, Ally Zimmerman, is going to introduce that item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. With me tonight is Amanda Lee, our Assistant to the City Manager, who we'll be presenting for your consideration, the final adoption of the Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Before I begin the discussion on the strategic plan, I did want to provide you a quick update on SB 2 funding. SB 2 funding is one of the primary funding sources in the strategic plan, and just last week allocations were announced, and the city of Vista will receive just over $408,000, and that's more than the anticipated amount that we thought of, $350,000, so I'd want to just update you on that. Okay, so now on to tonight's discussion item. The strategic plan was created over 18 months through extensive community outreach, dialogue with providers, staff including the Sheriff's Department, a vast amount of research and direction from City Council. Tonight, I'm excited to present to you the final strategic plan. The following is an overview of the specific programs and/or activities that are included in the strategic plan. First is the Internal Homelessness Task Force. The task force has been created to promote cooperation and coordination among city staff and departments, as well as staff education and development of innovative ideas to improve the delivery of services related to homelessness. The task force will operate as a steering committee and be charged with coordinating departments and divisions and evaluating and implementing the strategic plan. The task force will also be responsible for creating education and outreach resources that align with the strategic plan. As requested by the City Council, on January 28, staff updated the strategic plan to require the task force to provide the City Council quarterly written updates and include the city's contracted social worker to the task force. Next is the Homelessness Prevention Pilot Program. The Prevention Pilot Program will utilize one-time state allocated funds to individuals and/or families who are at risk of becoming homeless and need emergency assistance to stay in their home. The primary reasons for needing assistance include loss or reduction of income, change of family composition, medical emergencies, unexpected major expenses, and changes in living situations such as overcrowded or asked to leave. The program parameters are still being negotiated, however, the program, as requested, will include a financial literacy component. Also included in the strategic plan is the Home Share Coordination Services. Home Share Coordination Services offer low-cost housing options for people of all ages utilizing existing housing stock. Participants can be older adults, working professionals, or students. However, the program primarily works with older adults who wish to continue living in their homes and communities. A provider will oversee leasing, conduct landlord outreach, match roommates, and provide conflict resolution. The next program is the Historic Downtown Daytime Outreach Program. Per the direction of City Council, the strategic plan has been updated to include language that the program has been delayed up to 12 months. The program is pending recommendation from the city's contracted social worker, who will review the program and evaluate if the program would be viable for Vista's homeless community in the historic downtown area. If recommended, the outreach program would provide weekday transportation to a day center in North County that provides a safe, dignified place for those experiencing homelessness. The transportation would be provided by a full-time, trauma-trained professional. The next item is encampment cleanup. For safety of the community and our environment, encampment cleanups will occur on a continuous, as-needed basis. As mentioned earlier, community education and outreach programs will be overseen by the Internal Homelessness Task Force. Based on direction provided by the City Council on January 28, the governmental and legislative advocacy section on the strategic plan has been updated to establish a process for staff to continue to work with county, state, and federal agencies to advocate to maintain local control and to advocate for funding and other resources. Staff will conduct outreach statewide to identify like-minded cities interested in financially supporting efforts to address state legislation and ballot initiatives to addressing homelessness. In addition, staff will continue to work in collaboration with neighboring cities to establish relationships with county officials and working towards regional solutions. Next is the securing of shelter beds. This program will allow the city to enter into an agreement with the Alliance for Regional Solutions to secure up to 10 beds per night, I'm sorry, per night in shelters that are part of their Bridge to Housing Network. All Bridge to Housing Network shelters offer case management, housing navigation, and wraparound services to support successful graduation to stable housing and self-reliance. Lastly is our full-time social worker with Flex Funds. Vista will contract with a service provider to engage a full-time social worker with extensive experience with mental health and addiction issues. The social worker will coordinate a trauma-informed team that includes the Sheriff's Department and be restructured as a homeless outreach team or HOT. The team will focus on chronic homelessness and gathering data for evaluation. Based on direction received from City Council on January 28, the social worker will provide the City Council periodic reports and track how Flex Funds will be utilized. In closing, I do want to note that a significant priority of the strategic plan is to collect and report data to confirm the city's resources are making a positive impact. Additionally, the strategic plan is a living document and will be mended based on direction received from City Council and as needed. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the strategic plan to address homelessness. This concludes staff's presentation, and Ms. Zimmerman and I are available for questions.
I have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker?
That would be Kathleen Lippett. I think you're not on yet.
Not on? Okay.
Now you are.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kathleen Lippett. As a public health practitioner, one of the things that we learn very early on is the importance of prevention over responding. Responding to public health crises is not only not cost-effective, it is ineffective in helping people not to suffer the consequences of illnesses. We don't wait until a public health epidemic has created hundreds of thousands of people in the hospital being treated. We immunize and prevent their illness in the first place, where we possibly can, and that is no different from the homelessness situation. Focusing on responding to homelessness is sort of a red herring because you're not getting at the problem of the mental health problems that typically can follow early adolescent initiation of drug abuse. And allowing the industries like tobacco, the vaping industry, the marijuana manufacturing, and having all of the messages say yes, yes, yes to our youth doesn't help, doesn't serve them. It normalizes drug use, and they believe that it's harmless, and because that's what the industry tells them. They're not hearing these messages from public health. They're not hearing them from anyone except the marijuana industry, who has an economic, a very powerful economic strong conflict of interest. Moreover, we often now see more and more public officials and some of the policies that they're recommending that seem highly tainted by the marijuana industry influence. It does not go unnoticed, and it is not in the best interest of the citizens of your city. So I think it's very, very important that the city provide the information that your residents need, to be informed and not be informed by the, by a for-profit drug industry, but by your city and by your city officials and your public health and your prevention specialists. They have no economic conflicts of interest. They simply have the welfare of your youth and public safety in mind, so I hope you will consider that. When you look at the responses instead of the causes of homelessness, thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Tienda.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We have talked about this for quite a while, and I think this has stepped in the right direction. I'm really pleased that you included encampments, because I just came from not any town from here in the United States, but in Mexico, Masala. It's a tourist town, and the wealthy section is very clean, very taken care of, but there's also parts of it where there's encampments, and it makes the town blighted, even though it's a tourist town, tourist, tourist city. And I think the state's effort to limit our responses when it comes to encampment is ill-advised, and so we need to do whatever we can, have more control over how we deal with this, because although, I mean, part of it is factors outside of our control, but certainly we can do what we must to make our city less blighted. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker, so Councilmember Green.
I just wanted to thank staff so much for putting this together and kind of sitting through all of our discussions and debates and crafting this and putting this together. To have an actual plan to address homelessness within our city and have something on paper and something that's going to be accountable to us, giving us quarterly updates, is really amazing and something that's going to be fantastic for our city. So thank you so much for putting this together. Some of the things in here, the executive summary basically says, "We're going to implement a systematic, long-term response that ensures homelessness is prevented," and in big letters here, it says, "The community's goal is for homelessness to be a rare, brief, and one-time experience." And knowing that we're working towards that for our citizens is just something that I feel like we can all on this council be very, very proud of, and it's, you know, a testament to your hard work as well, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Franklin.
I would echo Councilwoman Green's comments, thanking staff for their hard work on this. I know you've all invested a lot of time, and thank you also to all the members of the council for all of your putting up with my drawing on about some of the subject matter here. This is absolutely something that the people of Vista expect us to be leaders on. They expect us to use all of the resources that are at our disposal and to think creatively about resources that we didn't know yet were at our disposal. I still have reservations about some of the component programs that we've come up with here, and I look forward to shaping the policies of the individual programs, which are going to come back to us on an individual basis. But as an overall plan, as a beginning point, to show the community that not only have we thought through a holistic approach, it's not, it's not whole in that it addresses every part of the problem, because no plan could, but this is a major step in the right direction for our city. It's going to require a lot of oversight because we are experimenting with several of these programs, and it's going to be incredibly important that we continue to think as a council of these as experiments, and we're going to need to be quick to ask for real results, demand real numbers. We're going to need to be ready to double down on the things that work, and we're going to need to have the courage to end the programs that don't work, but that's part of experimenting. And sometimes when you don't know exactly what the solution to the problem is, because it's such a big problem, you try some things you aren't sure are going to work. So we're trying some innovative new things here, and again, just appreciate it, and I'm supporting, I would make a motion that we adopt the plan as it's been drafted, and again, with appreciation to all for their contributions, especially the members of the community who participated in this process.
Councilmember Contreras.
I second that motion. Yeah, just, you know, thank you so much to the staff and really the community too for being so involved, coming here, giving your testimony, writing to us, participating in any survey, and I want to thank the members of the City Council as well. I mean, obviously, we come from widely different perspectives and ideologies, but when it comes to looking at Vista and looking at how we move forward collectively and create a better city for everybody, including those who are experiencing housing insecurity, you know, we had some really good discussion up here, and I know that none of us up here is 100%. You know, this was not everybody's list, but we got to a point where the consensus is good for us to start looking at how we can be more effective and how we can start helping to increase the quality of life for everybody here in Vista. And so, again, I'm just really thankful for all the discussion that we've had and for staff's participation in helping us during our discussions and, you know, taking the direction that we provide and really creating some, something good. This is a really good first step, and I do want to echo what Councilmember Franklin was saying. We definitely, we've talked so much about data, and this is going to be a data-driven type of analysis as to which programs are working and which aren't. But with that said, we need to also keep in mind that some of these programs have about a two-year period that it takes for them, for us to start seeing results, like the Home Share Coordination. So we just got to keep that in mind. Some of it is not going to happen instantaneously, and that's okay, but I think it's a really amazing first step that we're taking here, and, you know, hopefully, we continue to hear from the public, and when it comes time to reevaluate, we have even more people filling these chambers and letting us know what they saw on the ground, what they, what you all would rather see, or if something, you know, that is part of this plan is really working and catching on. So we're going to need, we're going to need that feedback continuously, so invite a friend, invite your mom, your dad, your cousins. Come here to the chambers. If you can't make it, send us an email. We definitely want to continue to hear from the public, so thanks.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to say thank you to staff for all of the work in putting this comprehensive plan together for the city. And I know that in the discussions that we have had over the last couple of years, looking at all the different elements for the plan, looking at the different communities that we have, looking at the different types of homelessness that we have, we've had a lot of comments about this portion of the plan or that portion of the plan, and it's like we've said, my colleagues tonight, and we've said in the past, it has been in the past that as a city, we give money to the programs in our communities, and we ask them to please help our homeless population. This avenue that we're taking now is the city taking control, the city stepping up and saying, "We're not only just giving money to these outside agencies, we are actually working in concert with these agencies. We're stepping up to the plate. We're standing next to you. We're working together on this." And some people have said, "This program isn't going to work," or "That portion of it might not work," or "You need to do more over here," and that all might actually be true. We don't know yet. We're not there yet. And as it has been said, this is the first steps for us, and we will find things that we are very successful at, that are working beautifully, and we're going to find things that aren't working at all, and those are probably not the ones that we're going to keep in the program, and then we're going to find things that we just need to tweak a little bit here and tweak a little bit there. But it's important that we all understand that we're in this together as a community, and as it's been stated, we need to hear feedback from our community, from all of you, from our stakeholders, from our outside agencies, and from staff, to see how is this working and what do we need to do better, what do we need to do differently. Sometimes better isn't enough. You just need to do something different. So I want to say thank you, and I applaud everybody who has come out and talked to us, who has given us testimony of their personal experiences, as well as all the agency program administrators who have come and talked to us or sent us letters. So I am, I am excited, I'm sad that we need this in our community, but I'm excited that as a city, this is where we are now, that we're taking the steps to take control of this and to do more in our community. So I'm going to third that motion. Thank you.
And I'm going to agree with all of you, and I won't repeat everything, but I thank staff and our consultants also. They brought a lot to the table. They aren't here tonight, but I appreciate that they do that, and I appreciate all that you've done. It's been a long road, you guys, to get here, and so let's go forward and track it and see how it works, all of the hard work that's been put in on this plan. So with that, I guess we have to vote, right? Please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. We now have a strategic plan to address homelessness. So the next thing on our agenda, our next discussion item, is our fiscal year 2019-20 Second Quarter Financial Report. Finance Director Mike Silvio will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The fiscal year 1920 Second Quarter Report provides a summary and comparison of general fund budget to actual results. That's as of December 31, 2019. The report includes the proposed operating and capital budget adjustments for the city as well as one capital budget adjustment for Buenos Sanitation District. General fund revenues and expenditures are consistent with budgetary expectations for the second quarter. Significant amounts of cash receipts are not received evenly throughout the year, so would not expect to be at 50% at this time. Similarly, some expenses are more heavily weighted to the second half of the fiscal year. There are seven budget adjustments requests. That is explained in detail on Exhibit 2 on pages eight and nine of the Agenda Report. The largest impact on the general fund is an increase of $239,000 in revenue to account for better-than-expected moonlight ticket sales. for better-than-expected Moonlight ticket sales, and partially offset of that revenue is an increase of $51,000 in expense to fund temporary staffing costs for the final two shows of this fiscal year. The largest impact on other funds is a $1.5 million increase in capital expenditures for Buena Sanitation, specifically CIP Project 8131, which is the Buena Outfall Force Main Project. That's going to involve the construction of 20,000 new feet of sewer pipe to replace aging and, and move, relocate an undersized pipeline. And so with that summary, staff's recommendation is to receive and file the fiscal year 1920 Second Quarter Financial Report and adopt two resolutions. One for the city, amending the operating budgets for fiscal 1920 and 2021, and the capital budgets for fiscal 1819 and 1920. The second resolution is for Buena Sanitation District, which would amend the capital projects' budgets for 1819 and 1920. And with that, I'm available for any question Joe might have.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you.
Oh, is that from last time? No? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I forgot to erase you.
Thank you. A good job. I'm excited about the, the increase in Moonlight. I anticipate this, this summer, we might even see more of that, given our schedule and those shows that we have. It's a very exciting season. So with that, I would move that we adopt the resolutions as presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, seen no more speakers, and I will ask you to cast your.
Just, just one quick question. We find any, we catch the guy that broke $16,000 where the lights, the vandal?
So, it wasn't one individual. It was lights that were broken over time? And so, no, we didn't find the vandals of that, but it has been lights that were broken over time that we've replaced. And after 10 years of being in the facility, they don't make the lights anymore, so we're stocking up and we're replacing.
That fixture had a big leverage point, the way it was designed, or the new fixtures going to be less vulnerable to vandalism by any chance?
New fixtures that we buy for the third floor and someday will replace on the second floor are smaller in stature.
Okay.
So.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, with that, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And with that, it brings it to, I have, do I have any oral communication? I have one oral communication speaker, J.C. Nguyen. Oh, I have two, actually.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm J.C. Nguyen, AKA Santa for the city of Vista, and I'm here to tell the fine folks in TV land out there that we're planning on a big egg hunt at the Bringle Terrace Park again this year with me involved. It'll be my 10th year doing it. We kind of skipped last year because my daughter got married, but we're going to try to help out the rec department and get a bunch of volunteers, and I already got 15,000 pieces of candy and 7,000 eggs to throw on the ball fields out there to have a, a big egg hunt. And with the help of the Pride of Vista Lions, we'll be having a big egg hunt at Bringle Terrace Park from 9:00 a.m. till noon on April the 11th. And the festivities will include face painting, bonnet contests, hula hoop contests, and just a real good time for the whole family. So, bring the kids, grandkids, nieces, nephews, everybody, because when them kids scramble for that, it's one of the best feelings in the whole wide world. So, I always believe that the kids of Vista deserve nothing but the best, and I'm proud of our city for, for priding it. So, come out and enjoy the day, the smiles, the laughters that only the kids can provide, you know? And, and I'm also, I'm also proud that we're working with the city to, you know, the community and the city coming together for the kids. So, that's what, that's what the main thing is, is that we take care of them kids, because you know, someday they're going to be taking care of us. Okay? And for that, thank you. If we need any more questions later, I guess I could come back and answer them for you guys.
Thanks, J.C.
Thank you.
Thanks, J.C. Kathleen Lippett.
Thank you once again, Council. Good evening. The council proposed previously a workshop or task force to combat youth access to use of marijuana, as well as restricting deliveries to those 21 and over. I hope that the council will revisit that issue because it is more critical than ever. The state has abandoned their promises and responsibilities of enforcement, but that doesn't mean that it's a justification for Vista to abandon the responsibilities that will accompany the decision to allow commercial marijuana industry interests in the city. Just as you recognize the, the need to look at cost benefits, we hope that you will follow the youth use statistics for how the youth will increase their use of marijuana products when your commercial businesses come online. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker, and so with that, I have a few announcements, actually three, and then I'll pass it on down. So, the first thing I'm pleased to announce, the city has been awarded $2.3 million in state grant funding to help build the new park at the city's gateway entrance on Civic Center Drive and Paula Vista Drive. The park design is almost complete, and will come before the city council for approval later this year. So, more information about that is online at cityofvista.com/newpark. The city's joining the San Diego Creek to Bay Cleanup on Saturday, April 25th. The Vista Cleanup Site is located at Buena Creek, and details and registration information is online at creektobay, that's C-R-E-E-K-T-O-B-A-Y dot org. And with all the information about the spread of the new coronavirus that causes the disease called COVID-19, I want to assure our residents and businesses that the city of Vista takes your health and safety extremely seriously. Our executive team and public safety officials continue to monitor the disease, coordinating closely with public health experts at the County of San Diego. At this time, we recommend residents stay informed by visiting sandiegocounty.gov and follow the same prevention steps that are recommended to reduce the spread of the seasonal flu. So with that, I will pass it on down to Deputy Mayor.
I have no comments, except to say thank you to everybody coming out tonight, and staff, again, thank you for all the work you do for our community.
Councilmember Franklin.
I will second that.
And Councilmember.
I also want to third that, and then also thank J.C. for his work. I've seen him work super hard as the Easter Egg Man, and I've seen the chaos of kids running and grabbing Easter eggs and the joy that it brings them. So, thank you, and thank you for rallying the community to come out and do that. It's a really huge benefit to the city of Vista. And then also just staff, I know that the mayor, you know, said something about the $2.3 million. I mean, we don't get those grants unless you guys are working hard and getting those grants for us every day, boots on the ground. I know there's a lot of competition for that. So, the package you got put together to get us that money is fantastic, and that frees up more money for more parks in our city for our citizens. So, thank you so much.
Councilmember Contreras.
I'm looking at the weather forecast for tomorrow. If it doesn't rain, I'm still going to be doing my trash walk on Wednesday, starts at 9:00 a.m. at Luz Duran Park. We walk about between two to three miles, and we meet back at Luz Duran Park somewhere around 11 to 11:30. If it rains, though, we're not going to be picking up soggy trash, so it's going to have to wait till next week. And outside of that, really, really just amazed at the level of work that our staff does. Super happy that we were able to, to get this grant for Paula Vista Park. You know, it's one of the things I, I just made sure to check up with our state representative, our assembly member for the 76, just to ensure that we had everything possible when it came time to review this. And so, thank you so much to staff. We got everything we needed, and we got a good outcome, and so hopefully, we can continue to be really competitive for some of these grants, because who doesn't like free money for us to build stuff here in Vista, which means that we get to take pressure away from our general fund, our parks and rec, and all that. So, good things in, in store for Vista. That park is going to be phenomenal. I can't wait to have the design in front of me, and I hope everybody has a good rest of their Tuesday, and come meet me at Luz Duran Park tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., and let's walk and pick some trash up. Of course, if it rains, I'm not going to be there, you guys, so stay tuned.
If it rains, they can stay in bed.
Exactly.
Read a book.
Yeah.
Put their feet up.
It's kind of like a bread bowl, you know, type of, type of day if it rains, so some soup and inside a bread bowl would be good.
Okay. City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Making me hungry. Two items this evening. One is our fire department has recently completed updating the five-year strategic plan, so that runs from 2020 to 2025, and it'll continue to guide the department, the high-quality department that we have in the fire department. And I just wanted to say that the plan is available at the website, cityofvista.com, if you're interested in reading the plan. And the last item is the 2020 census count is beginning soon, so all households should be receiving notices from the census. You'll have the opportunity to provide your answers via email electronically on the website, or they'll respond by phone or mail. So, the sooner you take care of it, the less people that are going to be out on the streets having to count. If you want more information on the census, though, you can go to 2020census.gov. So, thank you.
About our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to add this evening.
And our city clerk, Kathy. Nothing. Okay, with that, it is 6:12. We are adjourned.